Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cadala.
Here.
Alderman Knite.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Lewitin.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. We begin tonight with a public hearing on the fiscal year 2008-2009 budget. In accordance with Illinois law, the notice of this public hearing was printed in the Daily Herald newspaper. The purpose of this hearing is to offer the public the opportunity to provide input on the proposed city budget for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2008, and ending April 30, 2009. In particular, we are interested in how our resources should be budgeted to meet the needs of our community. We will summarize the major provisions and follow with public comment. Ms. Powers, would you please provide a summary of the budget?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. If you'll notice on the first slide, I've included what this 2008-2009 proposed budget provides. Sorry, that's the second slide. The first one is revenues. The property tax rate for the fiscal year will be .3644. That is a final rate we've now received from the county, so taxes will be extended on that basis. That is a little less than the prior year, which was .3660. Another highlight of this budget is that non-home rule sales taxes are in the budget for a full year, and as you know, those are going to be used to pay for capital projects. We also have a new red light camera enforcement program. It won't be a full year this year because we still don't have all the permissions, but we still feel confident that that program is going to be approved and go forward sometime during the fiscal year. Finally, we've got $817,000 of interest income. That's for all of the funds except for the special service area and police pension funds. So that's all the operating funds of the city. It's substantially better than it's been in prior years because this council took action to make new banking arrangements, and we've had some great success with our local institutions, as well as the Illinois Funds and the Illinois Metropolitan Investment Trust. What this budget provides in terms of new or enhanced services is a new train station, two new police officers, a study of the treatment plan, an increased special events budget of $63,000, $1.3 million of street improvements, $100,000 of ornamental lighting, street lighting, $700,000 in water and sewer main replacements, $80,000 of storm sewer maintenance. That's also an increase over prior years. All of the city services that are currently being provided are provided again in this proposed budget. All of the equipment and vehicles that are being replaced in this proposed budget are in accordance with the city's vehicle and equipment replacement program. So it accomplishes quite a bit. And I think the staff is very grateful to the efforts of the council, particularly the finance chair, for all of the good work that was done over four meetings and many other -- four public meetings and many private meetings to get this accomplished. This is the final outcome of all of the city's funds. You'll see that there is fund balance left in all of the city's funds. The general fund, as we're estimating, $9.1 million, which is about nine and a half months of operations. State of Illinois requires or recommends that cities have about eight months, so we're over that. And we may even do better, but certainly we believe this budget is achievable. Wherever you see the red numbers or the minus numbers, that's a deficit for the current year. But I want to call your attention to the fact that occasionally, and many times, we have deficits that occur because of timing differences. For instance, if you look down at the bottom to the special service area fund, two years ago, three special service areas issued bonds, and those bond proceeds came in in one fiscal year. The engineering was done over the next year. The construction was begun at the end of that year and continued through this current fiscal year and will hopefully be completed in the next fiscal year. So you've got $9 million coming in at the beginning when the bonds were issued, and really not too much in the way of expenditure for a couple of years. Now all the construction is taking place, and finally, it will be finished in 2008-2009, maybe a little bit beyond that. So it's not really a deficit. It's just a difference between the cash that will come in during the 12 months we're proposing and the cash that will go out. But if you'll -- actually, the beginning fund balance in the special service area fund is substantially higher than that. We're talking about beginning the fiscal year with $6,249,000 in the fund balance. So that -- you'll see, I mean, this is simple subtractions. You take the revenues and subtract out the expenses and transfers and come up with a surplus or deficit, but it's not an operating deficit. The fund is in wonderful shape. It's the timing of the expenditures. That's true on the tourism fund. That's true on narcotics forfeiture. That's true on information technology. It's true on the economic development fund. And it's true on the commuter parking lot fund. That fund is going to have the expenditure for the train station this year, but it began with a substantial fund balance, and it will be receiving transfers from the economic development fund and capital projects. So these minuses should not alarm anyone. They're not operating deficits. Where you'd be more concerned is if the general fund was running a substantial deficit. That would mean that the city's basic services were not being covered by the revenues we were estimating. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. My compliments to you, Mr. Wilson, Alderman Wesley, Alderman Knite, and our city treasurer as well for the excellent work you did on the budget. Anyone interested in addressing the city council regarding the budget may do so at this time. Please approach the podium, state your name and address, and be sworn for the record. And this is only on the city budget at this point. Anyone wish to address the city council or have any questions of the finance director? There being no public comment, the city council is scheduled to vote on the budget tonight. Upon adoption and execution of the ordinance, the city manager will publish the final version of the document, place it on file in the city clerk's office and at the Wooddale Public Library. I'll now entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the budget. Is there such a motion?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lewitin.
Yes.
Alderman Police.
Yes.
Alderman Knite.
Yes.
Alderman Cadala.
Yes.
Alderman Shawkey.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
The public hearing is hereby adjourned. I now call to order the regular meeting of the city council. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cadala.
Here.
Alderman Knite.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Lewitin.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Shawkey.
Here.
Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. Corn B., President, would you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to define the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 3, 2008? Move. Is there a second on the question? All in favor, say aye.
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 Post. Motion carries. Bills, Alderman Wesley?
I obtain a motion to approve the bills $360,162.98.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Lewitin. Alderman Police.
Hold on one second. Yes.
Alderman Knite.
Yes.
Alderman Cadala.
Yes.
Alderman Shawkey.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Wesley.
No.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
All right, that's approved. Do any citizens wish to address the city council at this time? This would be regarding items not on the agenda. Any citizens wish to address the city council? Hearing none. I do have two written communiques. First one is Dear Mayor Johnson from Comcast. On behalf of the Comcast Foundation, we are excited to inform you that Salvatore Lombardi, a graduating senior from Fenton High School, has been chosen as a recipient of the Comcast Leaders and Achievers Scholarship Award. This award is given to high school students selected by their principals and who we believe to be future leaders and achievers in their respective communities. The scholarship amount is $1,000 and is intended to help support their future education. This is an exciting opportunity for both the students and the Comcast Foundation. We are happy to help support their future endeavors. I'll be hosting a luncheon in honor of the recipients at Dominican University on May 20. For anyone who would be interested, attend, contact the city manager. Signed, Carlo Cava Laro, Director of Government Affairs. And I'm in receipt of a second letter addressed to the city manager regarding case number 08-SU3 Special Use, 660 Pond Avenue, Wooddale, Illinois, was commonly known as the gun world. Dear Mr. Murmice, as you are aware, my office represents Jerome Saskim with respect to his petition for special use permit for the property commonly known as 660 Pond Avenue, Wooddale, Illinois. Please accept this correspondence as formal notice that my client is withdrawing his petition for a special use permit. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Signed, Marshall Subak of Hunt, Kaiser, Aranda, and Subak. That brings us to mayor's report. I take things slightly out of order. First item is proclamation to recognize Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautify our community, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and benefit our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore I, Kenneth P. Johnson, Mayor of the City of Wooddale, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 25, 2008, as Arbor Day in the City of Wooddale, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Just looking to see if there was any comment. All right, hearing none. Also under mayor's report, I appoint John Cadala and Nuncio Police to the committee, a subcommittee, to review the RFPs on the Thorndale Corridor. I want to remind everybody of the Chamber Wine Tasting, which is occurring this Friday, April 18, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Salt Creek Golf Club. Tickets in advance. If you buy them tonight, 20 bucks. Otherwise, $25 at the door. And also I want to remind every -- you should have in your packet the Mayor's and Manager's Annual Dinner is May 2, 2008. If you're interested in attending, contact the city manager. And that concludes my report. Mr. Manager?
I have two items. First item, the Clean Air Counts Committee is sponsoring a gas can replacement trade-in on this Saturday, Saturday, April 19, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the city hall parking lot. This is for all residents to come in and bring their old gas container in and then get a new environmentally friendly gas container in return, free of charge. The second item, Wooddale Vehicle stickers can begin to be purchased on May 22. Something new this year also by the Clean Air Counts Committee is when you come in for your vehicle sticker, you'll receive a free energy-efficient light bulb.
That brings us to the consent agenda. Is there any objections to any items on the consent agenda? Hearing none. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Now may I have a motion to approve the items on the agenda being a report and recommendation to direct the city attorney to draft the appropriate ordinance pursuant to case 08-TA2 COWD text amendment to provide for jurisdiction to the zoning board of appeals, to amend jurisdiction of zoning board of appeals. Two, to direct the city attorney to draft the appropriate ordinances agreements to schedule a public hearing pertaining to the annexation of land commonly known as 5N 101 and 5N 125 Wooddale Road, Oak Manor subdivision and nine-lot subdivision for the construction of use of nine single-family detached homes to comply with all R1 zoning district standards, and to approve a contract award for backup wells repairs in the amount not to exceed $51,973. Is there such a motion?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lewitin.
Approved.
Alderman Police.
Yes.
Alderman Knite.
Yes.
Alderman Cadala.
Yes.
Alderman Shawkey.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Those items are approved. That brings us to committee chairman reports. Planning, zoning, and building. Alderman Shawkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to concur with the planning, zoning, and building committee to direct the city attorney to draft the appropriate ordinances pertaining to case number 06-V18, a variation to permit outdoor storage at 363 Georgetown Square Shopping Center.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? All in police.
Last week, the petitioner asked about storage in the back year-round. But when he's talking about storage, he's talking about topsoil, mulch, and that type of stuff, not anything else like wood or whatever. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Do we need to put that in the minutes or in the ordinance? So it's only the seasonal items?
My understanding is, and the attorney's making a note, would be seasonal items. Alderman Winger?
I thought the year-round was going to be on the sidewalk, in the center of it, not on the outside in the back. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, because we wouldn't want it in the back along the brick wall because if it sits out there year-round, it looks like an eyesore if it's not kept real clean. In the inner circle of the shopping mall, in the sidewalk area, it's a little more concealed, a little more expected. But I wouldn't want material to sit year-round in the back of the shopping mall.
That's my understanding. Alderman Shawkey, in the parking lot and behind the store is seasonal. Under the canopy is year-round.
Would you repeat that, please, that the parking lot and the...
If I remember the committee correctly, in the parking lot, seasonal storage; behind the store, seasonal storage; and under the canopy, year-round.
Well, I thought there was some seasonal storage. I mean, year-round storage in the back as well.
Was there?
I believe so.
Alderman Wesley?
Mr. Mayor, I believe that was because the argument I had with that is outdoor storage. What do you do behind that shopping center with the grocery stores that store their cardboard, their four-by-fours, and all that? So I think that was the argument or discussion that we had, that we were going to allow it because if we don't allow it, then you better enforce it with everyone else in the shopping center, that they can't store cardboard out back, they can't store wooden pallets, they can't keep their milk crates out back. If you're looking at that ordinance to make it that strict, then I will not support this ordinance. I support the ordinance that was -- we discussed that it would be storage in the rear. During the winter, he does not store that much back there. It's only at this time, there's so much back there because he got his delivery, and the weather has been not cooperative at all, as you can see. So I thought that was the discussion that we had. If there's another ordinance out there that -- discussion that changes ordinance, I'm not aware of it at this time. That was a proposal that was on the table, that he could store in the rear of the building. But if you want to revisit that, then you better visit everyone in that shopping center then because I won't have it with everyone then. Thank you.
I have the minutes of the committee in front of me. And it's seasonal storage in the parking lot, it is seasonal storage behind the building, and year-round under the canopy. And there's also a stipulation that the storage in the parking lot cannot be more than eye height. We have a motion and a second. Anything further? Roll call.
Alderman Lewitin.
Yes.
Alderman Police.
Yes.
Alderman Knite.
Yes.
Alderman Cadala.
No.
Alderman Shawkey.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
That passes?
That's the end of my report, sir.
That brings us to Public Health, Safety, and Judiciary. Alderman Coles.
No report.
Public Works. Alderman Winger.
Yes, I make a motion to approve the 2002 roadway improvements project for molar construction, final payment of $6,670.02.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Lewitin.
Yes.
Alderman Police.
Yes.
Alderman Knite.
Yes.
Alderman Cadala.
Yes.
Alderman Shawkey.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Wesley.
No.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
That passes?
I make a motion to approve the standardized City of Wooddale Right-of-Way License Agreement in the amount of $51,973.
Is there a second?
Second.
No, I apologize. My notes are wrong. I was just looking at it again. I'm thinking...
Are you amending your motion?
Yes. Can I retract that to approve the standardized City of Wooddale Right-of-Way License Agreement?
The second or agree?
Yes.
Anything further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
That concludes my report.
Finance and Administration. Alderman Wesley.
I obtain a motion to approve the annual budget 2008-2009.
Is that -- are you making a motion?
Oh, yes, that is my motion.
Okay. Alderman Knite, is that your second?
Yes, it is.
Anything further on the question?
I have...
Alderman Wesley?
I forgot one thing. We did make a -- Mr. Knite, I mean, Knite brought something to our attention when we did the budget. We will make that change in the budget about the salt. I just want that in the minutes, that we will be making that change.
Well, this is an ordinance to adopt the budget. You're either adopting it or you're not.
All right, we'll adopt it then.
And then at a later date, if you want to make...
We'll do a budget amendment. That's fine.
Anything further? Roll call.
Alderman Lewitin.
Yes.
Alderman Police.
Yes.
Alderman Knite.
Yes.
Alderman Cadala.
Yes.
Alderman Shawkey.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
That passes? And that passes as ordinance 00817.
Okay. The other item on my agenda is relution, authorizing an uncertainty tax appeal case. I believe we do this every year. It was in your packet, so I would make that motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Lewitin.
Yes.
Alderman Police.
Yes.
Alderman Knite.
Yes.
Alderman Cadala.
Yes.
Alderman Shawkey.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
That passes. Resolution R-0811?
That is the end of my report, Mayor.
Community and Economic Development. Alderman Lewitin.
Thank you, Mayor. There is no report this evening.
That brings us to other business. May I have a motion to approve a letter of credit reduction for Carring Dental Center?
No move.
Second.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Thank you. I'm afraid that I'm going to ask to table this into our next council meeting that I had recalled that there was a promise made by Carring to plant trees in place of the ones that they took down. And I consulted with our building department, and we did confirm that in the agreement when we originally struck it with Carring, that they were to replant trees. And it has not been done. They are in acceptance that they need to do this. So I'd like to see them planted before we actually approve the credit reduction. So I'm going to make a motion to table this into our next city council meeting.
Motion to table takes precedence. If there's a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Close.
To opposition, motion carries. We do need an executive session tonight. May I have a motion to adjourn the city council to executive session?
So moved.
For purposes of review of the official minutes, land acquisition, land disposition, and pending litigation. Goodbye, Mayor.
Make that motion.
All right, may I have an amendment to that motion to recess the city council to executive session for purposes of review of the official minutes, land acquisition, land disposition, and pending litigation? Who is -- who made the motion? Alderman Cadala, do you agree?
I agree.
Who made the second? Do you agree? Roll call.
Alderman Lewitin.
Yes.
Alderman Police.
Yes.
Alderman Knite.
Yes.
Alderman Cadala.
Yes.
Alderman Shawkey.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
That passes. The city council is recessed to executive session.
I'm listening. I know. I've got it written. No. We have a meeting in May. Oh, I don't want to go to Congress. Me and the county don't get along.